We made it, huh? All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to beautiful downtown Sugar Camp. We are happy to be here, and we'll start our regular meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, some of my fondest memories go back to high school in Sugar Camp, hunting on the Stefanic Farm and Saint Regis Paper Company land here, so always fun to be back. All right, so we can start off with Administrator's Report on Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, and the town of Sugar Camp, town of Three Lakes via email, and the town of Monaco via email. Media notified via email included Vilas County News, Northwoods River News, WRGO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
Very good, thank you for that. Any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. I'll seek a motion for approval for tonight's agenda.
So move.
Okay, motion by Terry, was that second by Michelle?
No.
Stacy?
Stacy.
All right, any other questions on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call to vote all those in favor of the agenda as posted, signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next, we go to approval of the minutes of the October 26, 2022, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve minutes from October 26, 2022.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Terry, other questions, comments? Hearing none, take it to a vote, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next, we go on to approving vouchers, check register for the period of October 21, 2022, through November 10, 2022.
I will make the motion to approve checks dated October 21, 2022, through November 10, 2022, for accounts payable, ECH checks number 222300048 through 22, I'm sorry, through 222300085, regular checks number 127276 through 127360, with voided check number 127224, and manual checks number 5386 through 5393, in the amount of $535,693.03. And ACH payroll checks number 900038798 through 900038905, regular payroll checks number 59250 through 59265, in the amount of $178,066.37, for a total amount of $713,759.40.
Second.
All right, so we have motion by Josh, second by Terry. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next, we go to hearing comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Would anyone wish to speak on any agenda items tonight? Pretty quiet out there, all right, so we will move on to Administrator's Report, School Board, or the School Report Card, Public Release Information. Terry?
Okay, very good. The public release was just yesterday, and this is something that I take very seriously as far as the data is embargoed, and it is not to be out for public release. Districts can allow the internal staff, the principals, to look at it for the purposes of planning, but I on purpose made sure I didn't send anything out that could be a public record prior to that time. Just would rather fall on the side of doing things correctly. Our, tonight we'll just touch very briefly on the report, and next month we will have an in-depth report from the principals and admin team, as you saw last year. This year, things continue to look very good. We were in exceeding expectations based at Sugar Camp, Three Lakes Elementary, the Three Lakes High School, and the district overall. And in our junior high, we were at meets expectations, but we had an increase from last year of 59.5, which was meeting expectations, to 69.4, meeting expectations. That's a pretty significant increase. However, I just always want to remind everybody, these are particular data sets that can be really influenced by the number of people or the students in the seats. We look at this in a rolling average as well, but I don't ever want anyone to bank everything on the school report cards. It's one measurement of many things that we do. Overall, I'm very pleased. I had some time today and yesterday to look a little bit more deeply at the data. As a district, I can say it because it was in the news, not for us, but we are, as a district, falling in the top 20% of districts in the state, which is quite an achievement, and it's kind of nice because our neighbors do well, but we did do a little better. So I take pride in that because it's all the hard work of the principals, admin, and especially our teachers and the kids working on that. Is there any more specifics you'd like me to get into tonight? Because I could talk about this all day long.
Anyone have any, I guess, primary questions, I guess? We're going to get a more in-depth review of it next month, so. So, sounds like good news to start, and.
Very good news, yep.
And there's always, there's always work to be done to follow, but we like the direction, right?
We do.
Okay, very good. All right, so we'll look forward to hearing more on that in December. Okay, next, we go to new business, December meeting date.
Our regular meeting is scheduled for December 21 at 6:00 PM at Three Lakes in the boardroom. That will be our regular meeting time.
All right, very good.
I will give you a heads up, it's going to be a jam-packed agenda, so plan on spending some time with me.
You going to stay for Christmas, or?
Oh, we might have to have a little lunch break in between.
All right. Okay, next, we go to the Statement of the Board of Canvassers and Certificate of Elections.
All right, this is the certificate of the Board of Canvassers. We, the undersigned residents and electors of the school district of Three Lakes, Oneida, and Forest Counties, Wisconsin, do hereby certify that, one, a referendum election was held in the district on November 8, 2022, on the question of whether the school district budget should exceed the revenue limit by $4,000, $4,250,000 per year, beginning with the 2023-2024 school year, and ending with the 2027-2028 school year, for non-recurring purposes consisting of operational expenses. Number two, no later than 9:00 AM on Tuesday after the election, the undersigned met as a Board of Canvassers to examine the original returns certified to the district clerk of the district. Number three, the following is a true statement of the votes cast on the referendum election question, compiled with the original returns certified to the district clerk. The polling place of Hiles had nine yes, seven no. Monaco, 87 yes, 46 no. Peel, 22 yes, 14 no. Stella, zero yes, one no. Sugar Camp, 688 yes, 387 no. Three Lakes, 939 yes, 483 no, for a total of 1,745 yes to 938 no. And this was, the Board of Canvassers was myself, Stacy Klein, Pam Richardson, and Heidi Polcaster.
Very good, well, appreciate the report, and good news for the district and our students, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, awesome. Very good, let's move on to consider approval of the personal report of the new hires and resignations.
We do not have any new hires or resignations to report this month.
That's something new.
Yeah.
Okay, I can't even ask for a motion then, huh?
You cannot.
Next, go to consider appointment of the WASB delegate and alternate for the Delegate Assembly at the 2023 State Education Convention coming up in January.
Last year, Colette was our representative, and of course Terry is on the board, so we have not made that selection yet. We need to make that selection tonight so I can notify WASB and those who need to know, and we also need to select an alternate.
Very good. I would like to.
That's during the regular, during the convention, right?
It's during the convention, yes.
Yeah, it takes up.
A morning.
Yes.
At least three hours.
Yeah. It takes up a good part of one of the days anyway, so.
I'd be willing to volunteer.
All right, so.
It's actually fun. See, democracy getting action.
I'm not sure that's the face Mike was making up for.
I always thought it was fun.
It's interesting.
Seeing the polls, the tugs, and the yeses and the nos, and the.
Yeah, and sometimes you can talk about one word for.
For half an hour.
But yeah, definitely an important part of the entire convention, because all these, whatever gets voted upon gets forwarded to WSAB Board, and then they forward it on to OPo Action, right?
Yeah, the guys, we have, you know, guys that can lobby, we have lobbyists, three lobbyists, and they lobby then for whatever the convention votes for. And if the convention votes no, they don't lobby for it, and if yes, they'll lobby for it. So it's, it's interesting to see it all happen.
All right, so Josh, you step forward for their, for being first in line, anybody interested as the alternate?
I will.
Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so if someone could forward a motion for appointment of Josh as a WASB delegate and Stacy as alternate for the Delegate Assembly.
So move.
Second.
All right, so motion by Terry, second by Michelle. Does anybody have any other further questions? No, all right, call to vote, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, none heard, thank you for stepping forward, and yeah. It's always an interesting event, no question about it, so. Next, we go to consider revisions to the Board Vacancy Policy number 1640. Terry?
Okay, you don't have it in front of you, but this is one of the policies that we've talked about before. It's a little bit on the vague side as far as filling a vacancy, and in reviewing our policies, we know that we have to do some work. The intention when I put this on the agenda was to bring to you some sample policy to help you take a look and make a decision. And Mike and I met earlier this year, and then we met again this past week, and in our discussion, we just realized that we're talking about a much larger task than this one particular policy. Although this is going to be one that I'm going to bring to you rather soon, probably even next month for one of our firsts to consider, there's a lot more work to be done as far as looking at our policies comprehensively. I know you have looked at them, and there's a lot missing. Last year about this time, Kerry and I worked with Teresa Kimball at WASB and through Policy Resource Guide to take a look at our policies, and they did an identification, it's brief, it's like a checklist format, of the things that are missing, and then they prioritized by what is mandatory, what is suggested, and the big question is now where Mike and I are, where do we start? So my suggestion is that we look at board operations first, the first, you know, kind of sets the umbrella for everything else. I am going to talk to Scott Mikish again and get some input from him because he is a policy guy, but Mike and I have taken the information, and we're going to go through in this next few weeks, get back together before our next board meeting, and come to a consensus, those two of us, as to where we should really focus our energy. There are some areas that are more of the hot topics right now, in student needs, you know, some of the policies that are kind of hot topics, but we want to be really careful about our policies. We don't want them to define us because it's a boilerplate or somebody else created it. So it's going to be important work, and I'd like to get into the cycle of bringing one or two a month to you for the first look, you get a feel for it, you can think about it, and then we bring it back the second month to vote on it. That's the procedure we established a few meetings ago, that that's where we were going to go. So I just wanted to put this kind of on your front burner instead of the back burner because I do think it's going to take quite some time. I am willing to take on this project. Kerry is working on arranging her schedule to give me some more time. We want to do this policy, we're both, you know, we're committed to it. She's the right person because she is, she's got her ladies, as she calls them, and the connections that will help us, you know, get it rolling. But it's going to be a bigger task. I said to Mike, I am the first to admit, if we hit something that's just too big and we have to get more professional advice to step in or review, then we will go that route. But a lot of it is very much, it's very consistent, whether you're talking through Board Docs, Policy Resource Guide, or Niola, because it's based on law and cross-referencing and such. So that is my plan. I'm sorry I didn't bring that to you tonight. I was going to put it up electronically and say, well, look at these four, these four samples, and Mike and I couldn't even agree between the four samples, so that's what led us to the deeper conversation. Mike, what would you like to add to that?
Yeah, specific to the Board Vacancy Policy, there were several scenarios that weren't even covered by the sample policies themselves, and rather than bring something that, I guess, probably just needed more attention, you're going to talk to Scott a little bit on some of the things we talked about, and so it's just better just to wait and bring something that I guess we're ready to discuss, so. It is a big project, as Terry stated, and it's something that we've talked about, I remember, in past boards, and it's just, some of the things that are in there are definitely need attention. But, you know, it's one of those things, and any organization has this. It's the day-to-day things that get your attention, and those are the things that all of a sudden, you know, have to be first in line because you got to make sure that you keep the doors open, and, you know, all the things that come across somebody's plate, all of a sudden that can take a priority. But we're going to put some more energy and focus toward this direction, and it'll be a long-term project, so, there we go. Anybody have any questions on it?
Is it just out of date, or is it just incomplete information, or?
I would say definitely some are out of date.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to, so this one here, we're going to forward to for the December meeting, correct?
Right.
All right, very good. Next, go to Parent Teacher Conference Report.
Okay, from my eyeballing it, it seemed like we had a lot of parents attending, but I'm going to ask the principals to share out their information. They asked their staff to keep track of who came and who they made contact with. So who wants to be the first to step up? Steve, you willing?
Three Lakes Elementary, 162 possible parent conferences, 160 were completed, 127 in person, 22 by teleconference, and 11 by Zoom conference, so almost everyone. Only two showed up in some form or fashion. We scheduled, the first one, we tried to schedule everyone to a conference, so it's fairly high, it's probably the highest I've seen, so it's good.
Great job.
We had 117 out of 119 possible students. I did break it down by class, but there was. 4K was 16 out of 18, one phone call, one still coming up because the child was sick. Kindergarten was 100% in person. First grade was 18 out of the possible 21 in person, three by phone. Second grade was 16 out of the 18 with two phone calls. Third grade, 11 in person, out of the possible 15, four phone calls. Fourth grade was 10 out of 11 in person with one Zoom, so 100%, just one with Zoom. Fifth grade was five out of the possible 10, 12, I'm sorry, 10 out of the possible 12 in person, one phone call, and then one that didn't get back to her at all. And then sixth grade, I had 12 out of the possible 15 in person, two phone calls, and then one I called with no answer, chance of even a voicemail, so.
Very good, that's excellent.
Very good.
Wow, I feel a little bit. That's tough to follow for junior high high school.
It's a different world than junior high high school.
I will say though, we had much improved attendance over what it was last year. 322 total visits were reported. Keep in mind, that is one parent, if they visited all, visit four teachers, that's counted four times in that number, so that's why the numbers, it sounds good, right?
I'm a terrible number.
The high was 27 visits for one of our staff members, low was four. I would say though that the low of four was someone with probably eight on their caseload, so definitely not a, fairly good rate there. 15 was the average visits for parents, so for each individual teacher. So definitely worth the time, for sure. We did the format in classrooms, which personally I like. I know it's more blocking for us parents on the parent hat side, but I also like the confidentiality in having a conversation with the educator, and the line is out in the hallway, not cloistered in the gym. So that's kind of why we do that mode. But most definitely a better rate of attendance than we had in, well, at least last year's numbers I looked at, so.
Very good, excellent. And maybe with it getting out a little bit, that there's more of that privacy factor, you might see an increase because that is one of the things I've heard a few parents say, never really complaining, but concerned that, you know, someone could hear easily a private conversation.
Yes, and I would say also, I should add, that of those 322 visits, a vast majority of them were in-person visits.
Nice.
There were a dozen reported that were digital, so that's, a lot of them were face-to-face, I love that.
Yeah, very good.
It was nice to see their classrooms.
I like that too, because you can see where they're, you can see what the facility looks like, yep, how set up it is, for sure.
I got lost a couple times. I would circle around, I'm like, where am I?
You have all maps.
I had that too. But what threw me is I didn't, I couldn't find Mr. Stott, I didn't realize she was in the junior high hallway.
That's the lady, yep.
And I'm like, I can't go in the junior high hallway, I don't have a junior higher, but I think I have to. So I'm like walking around, I'm supposed to be here.
Yep, right at the end of the junior high hallway.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
All right, very good, so it sounded like elementary always had a very strong following. I know Sugar Camp was always proud of them when they came across 100%. You were very, very close this year, so. Tied with Three Lakes, and I know as students get older, it's a little more of a challenge to get the conferences and such like that. That's the way it's been, but I guess, I know we've retooled in the past, and, you know, based upon, you know, some of those reports coming through that, yeah, we didn't get quite the follow-through and such like that, so we tried the open gym concept, and so it's good that we're trying different things just to try to do whatever we think is best, so. All right, anybody have any questions? Moving on to School Forest Camp Three Update Report.
Very good, some steps, maybe small steps, but progress to report since last time you guys met. November the 2nd, we did receive notice, and I think Terry's got hard copies for you.
You guys?
Officially from the DNR that the wetland delineation was complete. They provide a map and an official letter indicating that we are green lighted from that level. That was on the 2nd of November, then on the 14th, Terry recently, obviously. Terry did provide the electronic information to Phil so that we can be notified when the electronic, through the WHAM system, the electronic permitting process, the DNR, is completed and granted. So no surprises with the wetland delineation. It works out exactly like Phil thought it would in terms of where the, where the most recent sketches were drawn for doing the work out there. Phil did update us that he's finishing up some electrical plans to get us the service we need for what we want to get started with out there. And once that's done, and obviously the DNR permits come through, that's, he's real close to having a set of specific plans for us that we can take to contractors to begin work.
We should have those, it's pending, we should have the DNR approval of application for the stormwater permit within the next five days. So that's as close as we've ever been, so we're excited.
Party loud, here we come. So that's about it for changes since the last time we talked. Some work's been done, and some time's been spent out there by a number of different, and I think I briefed you a little bit on that last month, about how we've had some adventures out there with our mystery tree, and it's still kind of a mystery tree, nothing really conclusive found out, but maybe that's the way we want to keep it, let our kids dive into a little bit more when they get out there.
Yeah.
In our classes, so.
So briefly looking at this wetland delineation, are there any differences in terms of what we're allowed to do between a forested swamp or a wet meadow?
That's a great question. I'll ask that to Phil, as I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I know the areas that we can't touch are areas that we were assuming we weren't going to be touching anyway.
Yeah.
Generally speaking.
Yeah. Which were the wet meadows?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'll have to read through this then, yeah.
It's good to get an official letter saying, all things, so far so good.
So are permits applied for, what's?
The permits are, what he needed me to do, that is filled with DNR, have already been paid for $140, and they are in the processing. So it's called the, the most important one here, it's called the Stormwater Notice of Intent. That's the one we're waiting for it to come through, and that, they said, was pending. The email that in should be within five days, we should get confirmation on that. And then that allows Phil to do more specific. I have one more drawing for you to share, it's the soil.
Soil pit, yep.
Yes, yeah. Not that I can speak real intelligently to them, but Justin, perhaps you can. It does, it does show on here in a light green line where those wetland swamp areas are. And I thought you might like to see this because this shows you the position of the parking lot with the trap range locations, and to me, it helped me visualize how it would work in between those two wetland areas.
Can pass that back to Terry.
Thank you. Did you want a copy of that?
Sure.
We don't have the extra. You can try and see the outlines.
Yeah. I'm not following this one here, though. The wet meadow.
Is it maybe not showing, is it this? Being a smaller depiction?
But I guess obviously Phil's got it figured out that the position of the parking lot avoids the areas that we need to avoid. This year is a dated of eleven sixteen, this map. So this wetland delineation is.
That's on the second, I think. This is from me copying it, the, the date here is the sixteenth, they came in at the same time with the, and a different email, but it was the same time.
Did this come from Phil or not?
That was from Phil.
It is, okay. Okay, so the stormwater permit, that's been applied for and that basically it would allow us to put in a parking lot, I would assume?
Yes. I had to sign off on it for the district, but that'll still go through Phil and he's getting his information together for us. His comprehensive plans, like I would call them, and then he can really put something down to paper and we'll be seeing it very soon.
Okay. All right, do we know what permits we'll need after that?
I do not.
Okay.
Did you have any more knowledge of that? I think this was the?
No, other than Phil said we'll take care of all of that process.
Okay.
Any questions? I think that there's less permitting that will be needed.
What type, Josh?
Being that it's in Sherwood Camp, there'll be less permitting needed.
Okay.
Um, other than possible just, just an approval by town as far as driveway location, but that might be it if anything. But that's already possibly done from when they originally put it in.
Yep, yep, so I think we had a driveway permit, right?
We did.
Yep.
I think the only permit that we would maybe need is building permit if we were to put up a structure.
Okay. All right. The stormwater permit though, that.
That has to be first before any building permit.
And if we were to consider any type of sanitary, uh, that would have to follow before building permit, I guess, if we wanted to consider something like that out there. Okay.
And that's where I think we really rely on Phil and, and his information to guide us.
Yeah, so he's working on electrical?
Yeah, he was working on a few different things that he was tying up.
He had a few questions that Terry and I are now talking through.
Okay.
About what kind of service we'll need, so he's developing.
All right.
Plans on that.
Perfect. Anybody have any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving forward. Uh, next, district-related positive happenings. Who's first?
I can start. We had our Veterans Day program this past uh Friday, which was well-attended as usual. Mrs. Westfall had her first concert, which was great. Um, and then this Friday, we have Grandparents' Day, which will be taking place here, so. Thanksgiving turkey and pecan pie and naps.
There you go.
Um, and I, we also have Veterans Day program. I'd just throw in a little um, really encouraged by uh Mrs. Westfall and the progress that's been made in the music area. Kids, when you see the little guys especially, they're excited, hey, Mrs. Westfall! That's a change, so I think that's headed in the right direction. Just kudos to her for starting off the year the right way here.
Sure, um, just to update the board, we have, we've had some additions to the business directory lately. Um, we've added uh Gerhertz Kitchen and Bath, we actually have a student who's doing some school-to-work opportunities there right now. Uh, we've added Carl's Transport, and we have over forty students attending a field trip tomorrow to learn more about the, the um distribution logistic um career cluster, so looking forward to that. And, and um, Tim uh from Carl's Transport is looking forward to talking about the CDL program that he just worked with the Cranon School District to implement some curriculum there, so looking forward to learning more about that tomorrow. Um, also met with a lady from Deliares Construction uh two weeks ago, and she came in and uh, like to thank Nate and Brad for doing a nice tour of the fab lab and our tech ed department. So she was very impressed and waiting to get the feedback as far as how Deliares can partner with us and offer some uh, some opportunities for our students above and beyond what we have in the tech ed department right now. So that was uh exciting. And also Hedberg Well Drilling, had a good conversation with one of the owners, and they're excited to be a partner with us. And they have a couple of job openings right now, look forward to uh partnering with us and helping out our students with some opportunities along the lines of the, the well drilling, septic and things like that, so. One other thing I'd like to add, on a little different note, I talked to Mr. Stotts and he just received over a hundred tiny brook trout. And he's going to be utilizing those in his biology and ecology classes. So he's going to be raising them throughout the course of the winter, and the goal is to, once they're at a, a mature enough level to introduce and form out creek this spring.
Oh wow.
Cool.
So, but students will get a chance throughout the entire winter and early spring to, to raise them, feed them, and drop them off in the creek and come uh mate, this is cool, so.
Yeah, it was pretty cool, Speed Larry showed up yesterday. With, with, with the trout eggs. By this morning, or was it last night? Luke said one had already hatched from swimming around.
How fun is that?
It was super fun.
Yeah.
Should've been the Blue Jay bus coming up.
Yeah.
All right, excellent.
Um, just want to echo what, what these two gentlemen said about Veterans Day, was it was a great community event, standing room only, in auditorium. Um, kudo to the music department, they did an excellent job. Uh, kudos to the four cares, that was an hour plus. They sat there through the whole thing, like I was really impressed. Um, that, because it's, it's, everybody's in there, but, um, so Veterans Day was, was a really good, good event. Um, NHS, um, and Student Council did a nice job with ushering people and, and um feeding the veterans uh with the help of the food service, obviously, feeding the veterans lunch uh after the ceremony was over. Two things I wanted to, to mention, uh, both of them, both of them feed into our goal about student engagement. Uh, our drama club just finished up their fall presentation, uh bedtime stories as told by my dad. Um, really good reviews, everybody that I heard, um, my own self seeing it, and everybody that I heard loved the, the performance itself. Uh, to me though, the, the notable thing is talking with uh Jen Meyer, uh, following up after the, the, the fall performance was over. Um, she's got more kids now than she's ever had in, in the program. Um, doing things like, a couple Fridays ago, they had a, an actor come in and do an acting clinic with our kids. Breathing a little bit of more excitement into the program, I think, is a phenomenal thing, and, and it's, it's, it's truthful, there's more kids involved. Um, I, 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 when, when the drama rehearsals get done and the kids come up to the front, it fills up the lobby, and that, that's beautiful, so. Uh, good, good news report there. Also, from the co-curricular side of things, uh, in, in the sports world, there are now twenty uh plus kids that have uh gotten some physical, uh, let me back up. When we're talking about student athletes, there's really four big boxes to check. There's the, the, the mental side of competing at the varsity level, there's speed, agility and strength. Those are kind of the main things uh that, that, that you want to achieve your best level at for, for, for high school varsity athletics. Um, along those lines, twenty-three kids have taken up the invitation that, that I sent out through all, all the coaches um to get a baseline physical, uh, set of battery baseline tests done here between the fall and winter season, uh, and we're off. Um, and, and when I say we're off, there's, there's a lot of planning to be done, but, but some of the things that, that we're working on. Um, uh, Mr. Busco is a speed, agility, uh explosiveness sort of, uh, that, that, that's his jam. Uh, he, he, he's a product of the Kimberly uh program. Um, we've, we've consulted with Bayport, we've got a little bit of it in there with uh Mr. Maney, who's the, now the activities director at Bayport. He's been there for quite a few years as, as a coaching teacher. Um, sort of modeling a program after, after what they're doing for their athletes and opportunities they're providing for their athletes. Anyway, long story short, uh, we've got quite a few kids who are starting to take us up on the offer. Uh, we hope to drill that down as we get it fine-tuned uh into our junior high. Um, maybe not so much with the strength training, but certainly with the agility, mobility sort of stuff, that's good stuff for kids to get into habit of. The way we're doing the, working on the, the mental piece of competing in sports is between Mr. Ditzler and Mr. Busco, they've sent formal invitations to, again, through our coaches, um, all of the leaders of our various sports have been invited to a book study that's starting second semester. Um, they're, they're going to get their nose in some, some of the best literature there is and, and discussion about how, how to be, how to be a leader amongst your peers. That's a good thing. Uh, and the beautiful thing for those of you parents who are in the room going, oh my gosh, my kid's schedule is so absolutely cranked tight right now, how can we possibly do another thing? We're, we're doing it in a way that's melding into their day. We're not saying, okay, you gotta show up at five thirty in the morning to lift weights, or you gotta stay till seven at night after your practices to, to do these things. Uh, thus far, it's been infused into wind time, uh, at, at a limited level, it's in our uh FIAID curriculum with our strength training uh and athletic training uh course that kids are signing up for at a pretty high rate, there's actually two sections at the high school uh right now. Today, uh, during wind time, I walked through Mr. Busco's uh session, and I saw fifteen kids working on, on speed and agility, flexibility sort of stuff. And I saw cross-country runners and soccer players and football players and baseball players and basketball players and uh females and males, and I, 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 I was really happy in my heart to see that it, th- this isn't just for a sport, this is for our program. And uh, many of the coaches, when given the opportunity, I think, helped to state to the kids, he signed up for this stuff. And so, good, good news there, that, that's only going to help breathe more participation and competition into um our kids. And, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, the, the prompt for me to, you know, this has been something that's in the back of our mind for a while, but the prompt for me was in a two-day, in a two-day window here in the fall, I saw our volleyball and our soccer and our football seasons end to, to, to very, very close, like we were a, 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 a sliver away from advancing. And in all those cases, the teams that advanced from that game had a, had a deep run, right? Like, we're, 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 we're good, let's move to great. That's kind of what was the impetus to say, hey, let's do this now, and, and like Mr. Busco, Mr. Ditzler, those guys are, and, and beautiful side of it from, from, from principal standpoint, this isn't costing the district anything. The, 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 these are all things that are happening through, through the course of people's day. Nobody's saying, hey, pay me to do this, you know, because as it, as it was, if you wanted to get some speed work for your kid, it's truck them to Rylander and go to a camp or whatever, but this, this is happening in-house and it's not going to cost the district at this time, you know? So, good, good, good stuff there in the engagement, um, we're.
Excellent. Anybody else have any positive happenings?
The art gala at the Center for the Arts, we were both there on Monday.
Saw a couple other school board awards already there, but.
Yep, I stopped in.
Yeah.
That was pretty awesome to see all the kids' artwork hanging up there.
It was really, it's some talented.
Yes, yes.
And thank you for bringing that up, Michelle, because it, it causes me to say that when Ms. Grappa came to me and said, hey, can, can we do this on parent-teacher conferences? And I, you know, oh, wait a second, parent-teacher conferences, teachers got to be here. I love the fact that we tried that, and I will say yes again next time when she comes to ask, because it was fantastic. Phenomenal thing, just, just down the street.
Right, yeah.
Anybody else?
I just think we have to say one more continuous thank you to our community for supporting us during the referendum. Um, not every district has the support that we just have become, I don't want to say accustomed to, but we know we are supported and it's our responsibility to continue that communication line and help people understand why we're doing what we're doing. And I'm just, I just take such a pride in being part of this community all the way through, so I just want to say one more thank you on record to everyone, and like I was able to tell um one of the reporters, it's great that this is done. It's a project that we don't, you know, have a problem with, but now we can really focus on what we're here for. Teaching and learning and helping our kids have the best experiences. So congratulations to the whole district.
Yeah, and, and I don't think we can thank the, the communities enough, and I will echo your comments as well, Terry. Um, it, it's, it was good to see the strength of the support that we saw from all the communities come together um and, and join in, I guess, what I call a responsibility I think we all have. Um, and that's to engage into our future, and our future is our kids. And uh, when I hear some of the things that were brought forth tonight, this is just another example, the opportunities our kids have that, you know, I, I look back at my high school experience and, and school experience and I thought it was great, but I wish I was back in school again.
Me too.
So it just continues to get better, and it's great to have a solid community of support behind you recognizing that we're moving in the right direction. And uh, so thank you to each and every one of our communities that have supported us. And uh, yeah, this is, this is where we want to be, and we'll just continue to work hard at what we do. So. And uh, yeah, very good. If none other, no other comments on that, I guess we'll move on to WASB correspondence.
Carrie got us registered for the convention, I believe she's been in contact with everyone. Um, so that's coming up. I noticed that the brochure is actually out what the uh agendas are and such, so watch for that. Uh, it looks really good. I, a couple of the speakers this year I'm familiar with, like the David Horzager in um Trust Matters, Building Trust. Excellent author and speaker, something that I think is at the heart of what we do, so, you know, I don't usually get real excited about the keynotes because it's like, eh, you know, but him, and then Tom Thibodeau is doing the breakfast. So if you are interested in that breakfast, please let Carrie know so she can sign you up for that. He's, is the um leader in the state, I would say, on servant leadership and very much an influence in, in how I try to approach leadership, so I feel a strong connection there. And um, I just think the, the reflecting the values and the moral compass in what you do as an organization comes through in so many ways. So we have a really good conference to look forward to. The other thing I just wanted to let you all know is last week I did attend the WASB um legislative advocacy, advocacy workshop, working with your legislators, and um, it was, again, it was good, it was uh geared for school boards, but very much focusing on how we get our concerns about the funding formula out there and what other opportunities or methods can we do to change some of the funding that falls so short for instance, our district. So I had a chance to talk to some of the other boards in the area. Um, I talked a little bit with Prentice, a little bit, Rylander was there, um, Tomahawk, Merrill, um, which is more difficult when you're not passing a referendum, so, you know, I got to hear some of those concerns as well. But it was very good and it kind of um got me re-energized that we can't let this go. Even though things haven't changed, I really want to work hard. Terry's going to work with me on this too, and Josh has said he will help me if, if, I will, you know, let him know what we need to do. But I do think that that's a voice that Three Lakes wants to have in making ourselves known and, and demonstrating what we do regardless of the situation and what we could do for our kids had we been given the opportunity or be given more funding to increase the needs or increase the opportunities that we just can't entertain at this point, so more to come on that.
Very good, excellent. Um, and at, at some point too, we could just put uh some type of a item on the agenda to invite them in to a, a meeting and uh give them a, a tour to follow after the meeting and engage them in something um that uh maybe a project or something like that that we're working on at the, at the moment. So uh, I know we got facility needs coming up that uh, um, we can maybe consider inviting them when we have that put in the agenda. So a lot of opportunities that we can do to keep our case in front of them, so. Very good. I see next we have a facility tour of Sherwood Camp. And following that, we will be adjourning to meeting each and every one of you. to meeting, each and every one of you are more than welcome to follow us as we get a tour of Sherwood Camp here, and, uh, uh, some new exciting things that have been done here since we were here a year ago, so, it's always good to see. Um, if you can't join us, thank you for staying with us tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing you in December.
But before you go, there's apple crusts.
There, there you go.
And there's cookies, so please, we've got to indulge, they treat us well.